Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibration position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on WNGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Councilman Reed is absent today. We have a quorum present and the meeting's open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for the blessings that you freely give us. Thank you for salvation most of all, Father, first and fourth. We thank you for the holiday yesterday, Father. We thank you for the freedoms that we do enjoy, Lord, and I do pray and ask for a special blessing on all those families, Father, who have family members that have served, fought, and paid that ultimate sacrifice so that we might enjoy that freedom. Would we just lift up this council, Father, as seen? Pray that you believe in God and direct everything that we do, Father. May we please you with all that we say and do and think. Honor and bless you always, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting's work session and city council meeting held on May 15.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the weeks of May 11 through 17 and 18 through 24.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor?
Is there anyone here with elder abuse program? For as Gadsden's elderly and senior adults are valued members of our society, the number of aged citizens is growing and the incidence of abuse, neglect, and exploitation of those adults is outpacing the growth of the population. Such elder abuse is a significant and complex social and health problem that impacts all cultural, socio-economic, and demographic groups. Combating the mistreatment of elderly and senior adults will help improve the quality of life and will allow them to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of the city of Gadsden. Gadsden's elderly and senior adults have a right to live free of abuse, neglect, exploitation, and to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to be valued members of this community. The city of Gadsden, the Council on Aging of Etowah County, the Adult Service Program of Etowah County Department of Human Resources, and many other social services agencies are committed to working closely with community partners to protect and provide for the needs of our aged citizens. The city of Gadsden and the Council on Aging of Etowah County are committed to serving the aging population by supporting programs and services and community needs, including public education. The protection of the Gadsden's elderly and senior adults is in the interest of all and further adds to the well-being of our city. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, Mayor of the city of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim June 20, 2018, as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in the city of Gadsden and encourage all of our citizens to raise awareness of elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Couple things. When I used to be in the real estate business, a lot of times I'd go out to do an appraisal and be an elderly person, just one, sometime two, usually just one, and they were going to be getting their driveway paved and they were borrowing some money and they paid the person up front and they never came back. And I've seen that with roofs, you know, and I always would tell them, "And if any elderly are looking on, never pay the money." Because I said, "Well, they have a pickup truck and two hammers. Don't ever give them the money up front. If they hadn't got the money to do it and then get paid, just don't give it to them because they're going to rip you off." So everybody pass that along to if you've got any elderly neighbors to not do that because it happens all the time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Do want to echo the sentiment. We definitely need to take, and I think many of you know that that's been a pet, a pet group in the community of mine for some years, and we do want to make sure that we continue to take care of our elderly and support groups like the Council on Aging who are doing an outstanding, who do a great job of advocating on their behalf and ensuring that we have resources in place to support them. So do want to thank the mayor for that acknowledgement and ask that as a community, we continue to support those groups.
Item number 8A is an ordinance amending City Code Section 18-122 pertaining to the meeting times of the Electrical Affairs Committee. This ordinance was presented May 15 for first reading. It provides for meetings to occur quarterly instead of on an as-needed basis. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8B is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 307 Harden Circle in District 1. The last known owner is Dexter Harrell. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on April 17. What is the pleasure of the council?
I've moved to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 8C is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 701 Blythe Street in District 2. The last known owner is Marvin Wainwright, care of Princess Dorothy Johnson Brasher. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on April 17. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Wait a minute. That's the one he wants.
The table for 30 days. I table for 30 days. I moved that we table it for 30 days.
Is there a second?
Check, I'm sorry.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 additional days.
Item number 8D is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens for grass cutting against 11 properties located at 100 to 106 Waterford Place and 102 to 120 Waterford Lane in District 5, Dine F. Bradford, Inc. being the last known owner. The amount is $131 each. These resolutions were tabled for two weeks on May 8. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I do this with reservations about this because I just, I just have a problem with it, but I do believe we need to do things orderly and, but I do it with reservation.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all the resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to table all 11 resolutions.
I do want to allow Mike Hilton to come up and speak to these. There was some additional discussion two weeks ago when this was initially brought up and we wanted him to offer up some insight and background.
Good morning. I'm Mike Hilton. I worked with the Public Works Department a couple of weeks ago. This was brought up initially. There was some question about whether or not some nuisance grass was cut at certain locations. We did do the research back in October toward the end of the cutting, grass cutting season last year. We did dispatch a crew, a full-time guy on the tractor and three weed eaters with him. They spent the day at that location. It had been identified by the nuisance grass building department by Pam and Brian both, identified all the lots. They sent the list to us. We spent the day out there cutting, turned in the proper paperwork. I personally observed the crew out there. Ty Jackson, supervisor, also observed the crew, in addition to the four employees that were there. I know there's some dispute about checks and that kind of thing. We don't have a dog in that fight. The question was, did we cut the grass? And yes, we did cut the grass. After that, it's beyond our control. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hilton. All right, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2409 James Street in District 1. Kevin Joel Garrett and Walmark Siding, Walmark Siding Outlet, Inc. being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Good morning. I'm Michelle Bradford and I'm attorney representing Ms. Louise Jeffrey, who has been granted letters of administration for the estate of her son. This property belonged to her son, and so, of course, they need extended time to work on the property. They've spent some money completing the roof and they will continue to improve, and so we're here to show that within six months, the property will be deeded out of his name into the rightful heirs' name, and so we just need time for that.
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in October, but as, and I had opportunity to talk with Michelle before the meeting, we worked the recorded owner who is deceased and didn't hear anything back. I haven't talked to anyone other than today. We certainly don't oppose an individual receiving rights of ownership to this property and making the needed improvements. She mentioned timeframe of six months. I wish it could happen quicker and maybe it can, but there is a nuisance that exists at that location, and on behalf of the neighborhoods and the residents there, I'm just asking for a resolution to be passed. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the question, say, in 60 days, could you have it looking a little bit better than this? Because six months is a long time.
That takes six months within the time.
For the title to change.
Yeah, for the title to change.
Okay, but can't they be working on it now?
Yeah, they are doing some work on it. They've been delayed for the last couple, you know, last couple of days. And his brother can speak to that better than I can.
Yes, we, you know, our story, we're trying to make the power box to the bank to see if they can complete it. And then what I can do is, what you got, the electrician gave you, they would make sure we need to be making all of them, which can look correct, we would be.
Oh, the foil, okay.
Yeah, we're just trying to get permission to go for a week.
Sir, could you come step up to my, give her name and address for the city clerk, please, so she'll have it on record?
Yes, my name is Alejandro Jeffrey. I'm Kevin Garrett's brother for the residence at 249 James Street.
You said that in order to get a electrical permit, you had to get it cleared up here first as far as whether we're going to abate it or not.
That's what the-
Is that what the electrician said?
This electrician came back and told us.
Well, with 60 days, we'll sort of get you started, sort of look better than what we see on this picture.
Yes, ma'am, totally.
So, Mr. Jeffrey, I think, just to be clear, you'll need to, right after the meeting, I want you to talk to that gentleman there. He'll give you some guidance on what you can do, and Mrs. Bradford understands kind of how to, you know, what questions to ask, but what she's after right now is if she gives you additional time, she wants to be, to know that you'll have the ability legally to go on the property and start making improvements. So that's where he'll help, okay? So you'll talk with him and, you know, obviously follow the guidance of your attorney. I think they'll be able to walk you through it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, no problem. Thank you.
I move that we give them 60 days.
Second.
Ms. Jeffrey.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 60 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 60 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1316 Chandler Street in District 2, FNA NP LLC, Possible Rights of Redemption of the Estate of Leroy Macary and potential heirs listed as Nettie Macary, Elmore Malcolm Macary, Christine Macary, Tequila Macary, Adriana Macary, Corbin McCary, Malcolm McCary, Antoine McCary, Ayla McCary, and Ally McCary being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in October of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the building department, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1423 Alabama Avenue in District 3, State of Alabama, with possible rights of redemption by Brenda Giles being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a partially burned house. We started the process in April of 2017. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in June of last year, but no work on that. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the building department to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 606 Hilliard Street in District 3, Marvis Carter and Nicola Kirby being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this property was originally condemned in November 2014. We've been dealing with the new owners since May of 2016. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, by looking at these pictures, and I've had so many complaints on this house. We should have knocked it down a long time ago, but you see, we've been dealing with it since 2014. We don't want to knock houses down. We was trying to give the people a chance to fix the house up, but it's been so many complaints and since 2014, we've been dealing with this. So we hate to knock them down, but we have no other choice when they're this bad and...
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 203 South 11th Street in District 5, Dewey R. Stevens and wife Deanna A. Stevens, Wells Fargo Bank, assigned to HSBC Bank USA, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, we started this case in October of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Now, what is the pleasure of the council?
On recommendation of the building department, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, this is the second house in this, in my district, that this family that was in this house has torn up. And, you know, sometimes we've got to do something about renters because renters tend to do harm to neighborhoods if you don't abate them. And, you know, for instance, parking in the front yard and stuff, I mean, it just looks so bad, and I wish this council would think about an ordinance to not allow people to park in the front yard. It just makes the neighborhood look bad. I live on a street where there's six rental houses and they park in the front yard of all of them, and it looks terrible. So I would hope that we would think about doing something like that.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Yes, sir, I have one. This is requested by the Revenue Department. It's an ordinance amending City Code Section 7491 to add license classification number 4551 arts and craft vendor. I ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two right here that I'd like to have considered, and this is a request from Parks and Recreation, and it's concerning a special event alcoholic beverage license, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both resolutions today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is the reason why there are two, because this special event license will be at two different locations, but this is for the Barbarian Challenge that's going to take place June the 15th through the 16th this year.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both.
Okay, I have another one. This is a request by the IDA, and this is authorizing a tax abatement agreement with Calkeen Minerals and Materials LLC for a new project in Gadsden, Alabama.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, but I would like for Mr. Green and those associated with this to come up. This is something that's going to be exciting for Gadsden, and I think he can talk about it a little bit better than I can. Well, the mayor, the mayor's going to come also.
I'd like to welcome our newest industry partner to Gadsden, Calcion Minerals. Calcion is opening a new facility that will bring new, great-paying jobs to Gadsden. Calcion will be harvesting olitic aragonite. It's one of those big words like mayonnaise. In the Bahamas and processing and distributing it at their facility in Gadsden. Calcion is also building a state-of-the-art research and development lab to continue to improve, innovate, and market their products. Calcion's projects have, products have a wide range of uses as raw materials for products from agriculture to plastics. Olitic aragonite is a sustainable product that has strong environmental benefits. Calcion is investing 2.6 million in their business in Gadsden, bringing approximately 70 jobs with an average salary of around 44,000. We couldn't make a project happen without the IDA Board of Directors and Assistant Director Bill Green. We're abating out the non-education taxes to help bring Calcion to Gadsden. We're glad to bring a great industry to Gadsden that will have long-term impacts on our community through highly-quality jobs and a sustainable industry. We welcome you to Gadsden.
My name is Anthony Myers, and I represent Calcion Minerals and Materials, and we're very pleased to be here in Gadsden to open up a new facility here, and I thank the mayor for a great background on our business. That was well done. And we're excited about opening up the facility in the industrial park area. We have about 80,000 square foot of building there. We're starting off with an initial production line there, where we'll be processing the olitic aragonite that we bring from the Bahamas, which we now bring through Florida, but we will now move that to Mobile, which will bring more business to Alabama, and we will rail it up and barge it up to, up into Gadsden and process the mineral in Gadsden. And we will produce a very, very fine powder which is used for the paper and plastics industry as a filler, and it's the only renewable, sustainable filler in the world used for that industry, and we're hoping that it'll expand significantly. We've, I just finished a- We've, I just finished a plastic show in Orlando, which is held once every four years. And there was a significant interest from some of the major plastic manufacturers in the, in the world. And they, they expect to look to doing a lot of ordering from our, from our company. And with that will be increased production lines, increased jobs, and increased laboratory and technical personnel that we'll be training and, and taking from the area of Gaston. So, I'm absolutely ecstatic and pleased to be here, to bring this industry here. And thank you for all of your cooperation and assistance. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I will mention the other gentleman going up front. He is a local lint head, so I know this is going to be.
I would just like to add to that, that lets us know that there are jobs here in the city. And those of you that are interested, I think you can live off of $44,000 a year in the city of Gaston. So, those of you that are needing jobs or wanting jobs, please apply. Make yourself available.
You know, I'm all about jobs, so we'll be conducting another job fair. Right now, scheduled for August 14th, so we're, we're going to see. So, we're very happy. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer, we're, we're very, very pleased to have you guys, and I'll echo the sentiment. We're very pleased to have you as a, as an industrial partner here in the city of Gaston. And we're excited about what you're going to bring. And doing a little research, also understand that you have a very, very impressively minimal environmental footprint. So, we, we appreciate that and you being a very responsible corporate partner in the, in the area. So, so welcome, as you are.
And I also like to thank Mr. Green. He's, he's the man behind the scene with some other help. So, we'd like to thank you also because you're out there looking and digging and making Gaston available for businesses or industry to come here. So, we appreciate what you do. We thank you for what you do and just continue to do it.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards. Remarks by the, I'm sorry, citizens' requests. We have one. Mr. Port.
Oh, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
See, normally, I would have the jazz man to entertain while I get in character. Reason I say character, because a couple of months ago, I was walking through the mall, and this lady walked up and said, "You look just like that guy that played music at the water wall." And well, I said, "I am." I said, "You don't have that cap on," because I had a baseball cap. So, let me get in character. Now, this is the water wall. Buster Poet, 907 Maryland. And my partner, the jazz man, he lives in my music room. This coming Monday, it's hard to believe that seven years. Music at the water wall. Musical Monday, DGI. I want to thank Kay Moore. I'm not sure I should thank her, because sometime you open your mouth and you get in things and you're hard to get out. Especially when people say, "I enjoy that. Come back again," because all winter, I've been asking, they've been asking me, saying, "When do you start again?" I was hoping to finish. But, I'm here. June, 11:30 to 1:30, Music at the Water Wall, Musical Monday. We will be doing it again, June through September, every Monday. Every Monday. It's hard, it's hard. But, I enjoy it. I enjoy the music, and people come and they enjoy the music. See, normally, the jazz man would be playing for you around now, but he had a gig over the weekend, so he told me this morning, he's tired. So, I just let him sit here and look at you. I have fun, he have fun. Come Monday, it's Return of Music to the Water Wall, along with Curly Dogs. And I want to thank each and every one who gave donation, the council, mayor, Family Saving, which was started by Curly DeRamos. I think he's the one got the initial funding, and all of y'all followed in. Carol Parker and whoever else, EMA. So, I just play music. This is the Curly Dog here, Curly DeRamos.
The only thing I need to add is that the Polish dogs are really hot, because once we quit, the word Polish kept going on. So, I'm leaving it up to the council and those others that's been participating in the giving to keep these people satisfied with those Polish. Yes, they come all the way from Michigan, and you can't find them here. I guess that's why they are so good.
Don't forget, June through September, 11:30 to 1:30. The finest music that I ever played. Come on, it's all free. All we need is you. Come greet, meet old friends, create new friends, and eat these wonderful Curly Dogs. I thank you all. Keep on coming, because we love politician. Come on in. You know, sometime we even put up with lawyers.
Chicken wings not too bad either.
All right, remarks by the mayor and council?
Yeah, I did want to say, he doesn't like to be in the limelight, but Mr. Frankie Davis worked really hard along with Bill Green to get this Calcion Company here. And when they go through the process of all the stuff, they can maybe put it in Coke bottles, any kind of plastic is environmentally free. I guess that's the right words. But it's, it's going to be a, maybe a big thing, I hope.
Councilwoman Toles?
No.
Mr. Eccles? Councilman Worthy?
I just want to announce my, the community meeting for District Three will be at Carver Community Center on June the 7th, first Thursday of the month, from 5:30 to 7:00. I'll announce it again next week.
Councilman Billy?
No, everything.
Councilman Kenny?
All right, just a couple of quick announcements. We do want to acknowledge the Councilman Reed's absent, and he's out due to some family medical issues. So, we want him to know that he's in our, he and his family are in our thoughts and prayers. Do want to, wish, hope everyone had a good Memorial Day. Memorial Day is important, not just because it's a day off, but it's also an opportunity for us as a nation to recognize those who've rendered the ultimate sacrifice in securing our, our way of life and our, our way of governing. So, we do appreciate those who've made that sacrifice, the families who've allowed them to make that sacrifice, and thank those who carry out events each year to recognize them as well. One other thing, do want to remind folks that next week is, are the primary elections. So, next Tuesday, June 5th are the primary elections, and we want to encourage, it's a great segue actually, from discussing Memorial Day to discussing one of the great rights that they fought for. And that was for us to be able to vote and cast a free ballot, free ballot. So, we do want to encourage people to go out and support and actually vote and, and turn out in high numbers to vote and support the electoral process. Lastly, due to the Memorial Day holiday yesterday, Monday's garbage route will be collected today, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday. And then, there are no changes for Thursday and Friday. Okay? If there's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So, move.